We need one block, I'm not gonna. Welcome to the City of Arcola in Texas. City Council, the 2022. Beginning at six P M. in our city hall. Only day that one three two 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 highway six. Our call with Texas seven seven five eight. For the purpose of considering the following items. City Council of the City of Arcola, Texas reserve to write to me and post that on any item. To the need of why you have been taken your post difficult for showing to authorization by title five. Capital five five one from Texas government code. And now all the meetings are ordered at six P M. and announce that we do have a call. Tonight's invitation will be led by council member frozen area biggie. Followed by the pledge of allegiance by council member Evelyn Jones.
Now I hear it's twins. The law is that people that was the same one more time. And the benefit cities business. Everything goes according to plan and God's plan. Yes, amen.
He's gonna have world of home. Councilmember Evelyn Jones here. Councilmember Rara Kbar.
Yeah.
Mayor Paul Towns, Evelyn Sancho.
Really.
Councilmember Logan Bigwood here. And councilmember Florence Johnson.
Really.
Also president is Corretta Edwards, the city secretary. Ricky Page, our finance director. We got the net over. This time. We will have public comments. Citizens who desire every time we have citizens who desire to represent the council with comments of your benefit. Maybe so this time, but here the three. As secretary, we have anyone done this before. We do. We have Reverend Doctor Joby. We have three. If he can come to the public screen.
Honorable mayor and other respected city council members. My name is Reverend Doctor Joby Manchin. And that I'm representing San Domas Evangelica Church in India. We bought a piece of land in the city of Arcola and trying to put the worship place. So we are trying to get the permission. And we are trying to get the water connection. That's where we are having significant difficulty and we have to see your hand. So may I request the contractor to come forward and then explain.
Hello, my name is Blue Paul. We're the contractors, but also the engineering firm for the town church. What we're hoping to do is try to resolve having a problem with the project. Resolve all obstacles except the water line. Unfortunately, there is no direct access to water for that property, which is just across the street from there. And we tried going through the neighbors and permitting advisors, but none of the neighbors approve. Giving us a utility, you know, for water use. And so we're pretty much down to hopefully getting approval for a water well. Even though we know that it's not something the city of Arcola doesn't do. But what we're asking for is a temporary water well. And when there is access to water in the future, that water well will be canceled. And then we have that connection directly to the city of Arcola with water whenever it's possible. Just so that this project doesn't get put on hold for too long until that property has that. Thank you.
Next, we have Ted Ross. We have three minutes.
Okay, I'm Pat Ross, my manager. We're looking at, I don't know if y'all know, the five oh two. It's a residential address, so I'm coming in Darby. There's a property over there for sale that I want to buy. I found I can buy it. I can buy it, but soon as soon I can tie the water to it. What I want to build is a metal building. We're gonna make it look nice. It'll look really nice. We're gonna run a business office, not really a business, but you can, I live down the road. I have a room with Oxford Forest. By the Starbucks, everybody lives in Edgarland. We built the building in the back. It's a garage. Shop and center back there and we run the business side. You'll see a couple trucks during the morning. Seven thirty to nine thirty, they'll be gone the rest of the day. Won't be able to tell us this at all. We're not gonna put Dakota Air off the front, everything like that. It won't be able to tell. My wife's not gonna live there. I actually lived there for about four years and then we're gonna move. But the company is gonna be there. And there'll be some trucks in and out of there, but only in the morning. There'll be one. My secretary's gonna be there. Her vehicle may park in the garage. I don't know, but. The front is gonna look really nice. The side will have a total garage in the back. And I'm gonna find out if I could put a thirty foot over the ditch. So I can have a driveway to go into the garage. And I need to make sure I can do it, otherwise I'm not gonna buy a property. I was told I should come this meeting to voice it and see where it goes from here.
There's just several items that concern the women of the agenda. The first one was the special consideration of possible action to move to. All the political purposes. My concern is how many little services have our contacts. Item C, the special on non work. As an audit, I'm a resident of the city. Item E, why does it that as a major? You're supposed to direct a lot of these programs. And us as tax people, we're gonna have to pay forty seven thousand five hundred dollars because you can't give your dollars. Something that we told the cities and we were running, that you were going to be involved with the people and you're gonna help us. And you don't do it, you can't do it. The third one is consideration and possible action. Into enterprise, this other company, how many companies have our contacts? How many, you know, are y'all just trying to contact their friends and families? The last one, and it's a very, very concern. Because if somebody filed a lawsuit. And that lawsuit has profit personally. Why do I, as a tax paying Arcola resident, have to pay your tax, your attorney? Especially when the judge didn't allow it. Y'all should be ashamed, whoever, you know, you win, you are. When you went and hired on the attorney's office with the. Allow you to have this division, so that's fine, I'm glad that you're there. But then now you're asking us as taxpayers to pay your attorney. And that is shameful, 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 shame, shame on y'all.
Next, we have. Five minutes. We have three minutes, sir.
I'm debating, I'm on a W T R N, personal president. Oh, this is coming. Leading item four A T. Are you being contacted with a text doc in a private here? So I already heard that spring up and let them know, that already know that five twenty wasn't being expanded. The thing that has additional length, I would ask for. And meantime, that will be three lanes, the middle lane used to, for people get a chance to pull aside. Or traffic that I can deal and move forward and not hold back the traffic. Very important since I've done, we're here on our north side, five twenty, my daddy, additional lane. And traffic rules and let the middle lane give the people a chance to pull away and not hold traffic. And it'll be moving forward. So it'd be, it'd be good to work ahead of time, say, say wait two years, you know, pulling the traffic back. The bigger issue, I think, and my concern, maybe when I were yesterday. Then they go, also another entry being constructed into no, no land or not right. It's under text that rule, they can't, I mean, driveway or entry within five hundred feet of what I want that's standing there. So that's within less than a hundred or two hundred feet. Very close, so very important, maximum hope, okay. Remember, and new, new danger. Okay, thank you.
I'm thinking, we have more. The general audience for public comments is closed. Now we're going to.
I have.
And regular. To the consent and regular attendance item for the public comments. And the first one that we have is Mr. Burton. Mr. Burton, we have three.
Yes. I forgot about him, I forgot about him. My heart attack back there. Getting the first report on five doors. At the workshop meeting yesterday in our city where. The mayor and Ms. Graham are requesting for a settlement by a hundred dollars. In front of the summer program. The reason the money is so high, Mel said, that see what you gave to me. We both believe that Mel and me involved in the summer program. So she said, this money is high. Or pay Texas health to run the program. The count wrong, I believe six agents. And councilor said, how, consider that's a question. How did she come up with that number? I found it in the express, which is found by Mayor Williams and her right hand is president of our nation, Grant. And also he controls the county, which he had revoked with y'all and everything that's put in front of him. Meaning Donald Sancho and Baker, they're paid. Which don't speak, but he still smear our picture. Of folks, they were very little more. Second. On this agenda, Donald Frank, Donald Baker and Sancho. Found lawsuit, Mr. Mayor. City secretary. City administrator and city chairman for residency, councilman Sancho. Although they wanted justice. In the court on residency. But the judge ruled against the city having paid. For their attorney fee. For discounts to vote on his bias vote, the two, north of sixty thousand dollars paid. These individuals' legal fees is complete disrespect to the city. You need citizens themselves, voting, it's called integrity. Keep it honest, keep it honest. Please believe me, I am already at the DA's office. If this misprovisional act of God is fair. Last night, these. Internet. Councilmember Donald Sancho, I see what you are asking for in previous, for the previous year party. After you. Voted to accept the party, you know, placed in front of you. And you signed out, saying if you didn't see anything that might be wrong or misleading or something fishy in the office. That's the problem. So quick to vote without reading. The material that's given to you. You have two hands, two eyes. And a brain and you didn't watch. But that's another story. Ms. Don, you're lying about a report. That you knew you never had about permits that I would give you pay. You're lying, lying.
Your time is up.
Lying, lying, lying.
Good three minutes, thank you.
Think about it, John.
Next, we have.
For life.
Jerry Nod. We have a very.
Yes, how you doing, good evening? My name is Oscar, I'm speaking on behalf of your development. He owns a property at two thirty one Rice Avenue. It's had the property donated for eighteen to twenty years and paying taxes on the property. We came to pull our permit about two weeks ago to do the survey of the land. And we were told that we couldn't build on the property. We're also told that Fort Bend County was in part of the infrastructure and planning and development. So we contacted Fort Bend, so that we had no plans of doing anything in the future. But we've settled it on day today and we kind of voiced our concerns. Again, the property has a two thirty one Rice Avenue.
At this time, we are moving to city council comments. Notice here by giving them reports for section five five one, five zero four one. File of the technical government code, city council of the city of Arcola. May receive reports about items of community from city staff and or members of the city county. So at this time, I'll ask. Councilmember Donald, if you have any comments. About the government, I haven't seen it, you know, you have to wait. And the audience, the fewest artists, when they gave this a paper, they told us to put down. What we thought about it will be accepted, you have any concern? And I think, Donald, that I had concerns about it. I told him, I think, he's, I said, when I had some thoughts that they would not be done. Statute in the man's office. And so he called me at home. And I told him, I had a concern. Because the way the mayor monitoring is, I'm worried that that time hold out. I didn't even share it with him. But I'm getting what this monitoring is, I tell the truth, you're a good liar with me. Not alone, you tell him, there are no good lies, all lies are there. But I want this forensic audit. And I wanted to see this with you in front of you. If there's anything wrong, you know, you do. I hope they will, they will, they will do it, thank you. Donald, I'm the mayor boss.
I think very much.
Before now, you know.
Well, I was on you, so I don't know, I'm just a little man, I mean. I'm probably gonna come from, I was funding the next year. I enjoy speaking to the citizens, they're, they're saying, you know, come up anymore, they. Saying how proud they are of the city of Arcola, how. He came together and voted out of that, the bad team, putting those to move forward together. And I'm running again next year now, like you were saying. The citizens, you know, they're voting out, I'm gonna run. And I'm always gonna talk to anybody while I'm concerned. I'm not, I'm really not concerned about any bad. Comments that anybody has said, now I'm putting ahead a bad thing over the last couple of months and I've been, I've been in process, but. We're going on my side and you should give something different about you today, playing like today. Yeah, you should be a standard.
Hey, yeah, you try out forty here and I don't have a thing out there. Have been in service that you say, oh my goodness. But this time. Councilman David.
Uh, yes. As far as, I say the bees. The bees that someone is talking about is that. We were, that we, they didn't pass the whole thing. They had to begin somewhere, they can begin with, thank God, leave me, you know. Okay, I'm sure someone needs to have a way to start it. To seek your lawyers, and I'm sure there are more to the truth. But, okay, we had to start somewhere with the lawyers and with them. And I think you use city funds to pay. For your attorney, right?
What am I doing?
It was the city's attorney, so. Which is the city's attorney. Yeah, I can't, I will. I'm just not pleased with you standing up there, you know, who are in the city council. That we have out now, spreading bad vibes, you know, to the audience and stuff. That's just not perfect at all. I know you're not in this seat anymore, but you still should have some support about yourself. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. My concern is the mosquito feel really bad in the city. And I don't know if we had selected someone to spread. You live, have they been spreading?
It's in Thursday, at noon. Okay. Uh, the only thing. That we should hear more often, we have to make, we're gonna talk to this place like.
So it's only on Thursday night at nine. You know the time.
Um, I think it says one A M.
And we just jam everybody. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson. I was gonna have a comment until the regular agenda items has. Have probably been talked about, but let me just say, since this is the floor, we have not been able to talk about items of community. Let me just say, just to let the community know. I relinquished my role with Community Express last year. I was a board member. I was not paid. I have always. Due to a lot of that position, I have a volunteer position. I was never paid for that, for what I did with the summer program. So the reason why that has to be raised is because we now have to pay people to run the program. So I just wanted to clarify that, so I want the community to be aware of that. Also wanna address that issue, I know what I'm told, I said, address it, but I'm gonna address the issue of the Rice Avenue. Situation. That was something that was done under the previous members, because he didn't want to run a road behind his house. We are looking at, of the, for county to probably rectify that situation. And also, we had a workshop on yesterday, we thought he had a workshop, so you really should be aware. Before these meetings, so that we can have, people can be informed about what's on the agenda. You can come and ask questions about what's on the agenda. And get some real answers about what's on the agenda. What I hope to do, and I wish the former mayor much success and wish him well. But if your role is to come here and constantly ask this council now. I will say, we're not gonna operate in chaos. We're moving forward. I hope that the community will be on our side and we move forward. To bring better resources to the city. And that's what my focus is. So just know that we are working on your behalf. And even though, you know, you may have your concerns and we don't hear them. But just know that we're gonna move, we're moving on that space. A citizen of Arcola, all. With that, we will move forward to the consent agenda, now secretary. Consent agenda, all consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council. And will be impacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Unless a city council request in which these things will be removed from the consent agenda. And considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number three A, consent agenda. Consideration and action on the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January the ninth. Twenty twenty four. Special meeting, January the thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Regular meeting, February the thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Special meeting, February the twentieth, twenty twenty four. Regular meeting, March, well, twenty twenty four. Special meeting, March twenty fifth, twenty sixth, twenty four. Regular. Meeting, April the ninth, twenty twenty four. And regular meeting, May fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Corretta Edwards was here to be, to be secretary, I have an old comment. If everyone is having an opportunity to do those minutes, I would anything to all three. Post made by Councilmember Jones, second by Web Pro Towns Fendos. All in favor, all opposed? All just cast. Regular agenda item four A. Discussion, consideration of and possible action on an update from mayor. Either agreement for the following items. Land sold to text doc. Meeting with city officials and businesses. Fort Bend County Development Agreement process. At this time, I'll ask. Dr. Goldberg to address the text doc. Land sold to text doc, please. Mayor and council committee. Redstock wanted to purchase a piece of property that was owned by the city of Arcola. And we sold it, but before selling it, our city engineer advised us to record the easement. That easement for this particular property was recorded in April. And we closed on the sale and we received a check in its current and general fund. But it's our intent to move it to what we call our savings account officially named text doc. And so we received one million, four thousand four hundred and twenty six dollars. So I wanna thank you all for being patient with me over the last few weeks. I mean, many of you have reached out and I've never been able to be back. But I've had many, many meetings over the past weeks and I've gotten affirmation for the city business. And many of the people who are conducting meetings with the city, so. I've had meetings with the county and state officials. Who are very interested in reestablishing a relationship with the city and providing resources for. Projects that need to be conducted in the city. Specifically, and I talked about this specifically at the bottom, but they are willing to engage and engage with the city to do that. We talked with one of the text doc project leaders regarding the five from the morning expansion. Which we were told that that probably won't officially start until twenty twenty six. But I think someone mentioned the road that they seen down there so far. I think they are looking to, they need an anyway, a road to get over there to start doing some of the. I guess. Some of the things that they need to do before they actually start to work, so. So that's what that little road is for. Talk to the city engineer, we talked about the wastewater capacity and the water. Capacity that we have, we see him. Some further work with expanding capacity for all the agreements that have been made. Under previous demonstrations. on the previous demonstrations, I keep saying the previous demonstration simply because I want to, I want to be able to identify which one we're talking about. Uh, so we're looking at how we can expand the capacity going on forward. I've spoken with uh with the utility, utility operator, Mr. Marzoni, and we've talked uh at length about initiatives that are going on in the city. And he'll he'll address those maybe from us. I talked to the judge who runs our port uh here every day and I mean whether he can uh really really improve that process and uh it's been more efficient. City is bringing in quite a bit of tax revenue from the port system and so uh had an opportunity to speak with him. I've spoken with all the staff members uh here in the city. I wanted to get a, kind of get a feel for the current uh climate here, like the city, like the city was told to be here. What we can do to enhance it, what we need to do to get it to service the community of Arcola there. And so, we wanna all make sure that we all one forward, one focus, focused with the idea that we are here to serve the people of Arcola. Uh, uh, at a meeting with uh the Fordham County Judge taking your on on my end, so one thought. And so we're looking forward to uh seeing what he has to say, because he's pre-interested on the in office as well. And we had a meeting today with the Roland Bridge Commissioner. And he's gonna put Arcola on the schedule to deal with some of the street repairs that need to be done in the city. Also, had a chance to uh sit down with Fordham County Commissioner uh for section one A long that that the county took out uh to pay off, to pay for our water plant. That debt has been relieved of the of the city, that has been paid off. Uh, and as a result, we are able to, the the grant that we were having to flock around the city fund every, every uh year, we can now utilize that money for other city projects. We no longer have to pay that loan for that. I've met with architects to uh bring that community center that I said that I would bring to the city. Now with the architects on yesterday, we are looking to bring in a community center right next door and Cory's next door. And uh, then we'll also be getting some of the young folks involved in that process. And we will also have a town hall meeting to get residents of Arcola involved in that process as well. To get your input and uh that project is something we're looking to look forward as quickly as possible. Uh, the uh county will be going through every street in Arcola during a street and drainage assessment and looking at where they can uh where they can come in and some places Roland Bridge will give it helps, but some places they will have to contract out some outside firms to come in. Want to complete this, have to fix and repair streets. I I don't know if some of y'all, you may take that for granted, but there are some streets in Arcola that are really, really in a bad shape and uh serious face of disrepair. And those uh are gonna be the first one to be repaired. And I also have spoken to them about uh the streets of Arcola on Rice Avenue. Uh, I had the chief of police to drive me and the city man straight around every street in Arcola. So we can get a, get the firsthand with and what what the conditions are and what we need to do because our taxpayers, we understand that taxpayers pay their money. We want to make sure that they can see their money, their taxpayer, taxpayers' money at work for them in the city. So trust me, we are getting every day focused on how we can better serve the people of Arcola. Uh, and lastly, I spoke with Torby and I S P today. Uh, I know on the area down where where I would know that I haven't been around the entire city, but I noticed that the kids when they are out uh catching the bus, many times they're on the edge of those streets, the streets are not, are very narrow because of the way the ditches have been dug out. So we need to find a, create a platform for these kids to be able to stand on where the desk covered. So we will talk to the county about providing bus stops uh for the kids, so they can actually have a cover uh, a covered platform basically, so they can be out of the way for those streets and uh and uh you probably want the weather, when the weather is not so good, so. Uh, so those are all the the meetings I've been having. In addition to all the phones, some phone calls that are coming in, so yeah, again, thank y'all for being patient with me. Uh, and I will get on a regular schedule moving forward. As far as the development agreements, we have been reviewing the development agreements that we have currently with the city and and with other developers. And we have also been without a city attorney. So we have three city attorneys, we we posted this position. Three firms reached out to us, we have had interviews with all three of those firms. And we have a committee that met with them and we came up with the firm that we thought had the most experience with city and municipality uh uh governance and so that's um that we have put forward to come and present to the resident come yesterday during our workshop with the city council. And so that is uh, that's what we have uh on uh on the agenda tonight of the city council could consider. So, and then we go back with those uh with now those development agreements. Now that when we have a city attorney that comes on board, what we will do, we will have the city attorney to review those agreements. And then we will then move forward uh further agreements if we find them. That's where we stand with those.
Regular agenda item four B. Discussion, consideration of and possible action on engaging, also and also L L C for the general legal services for the city of Arcola. Mayor, give me.
Can I extend a motion, please? Motion has been made by Mayor Proctor, I've had the same vote, second by Councilmember Jones. All in favor, all opposed. Motion passed.
Regular agenda item four C. Discussion, consideration of and possible action of the fiscal year twenty twenty three. Audited by Brooks, Ronson and company, D L H.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, my name is Mike Brooks, Auto Partner, we're folks watching the company, CPAs. Being in front of you, you do have a copy of the audited financial statement fiscal during the September thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, first, I just wanna thank Ruthie and the management staff in the city, you really got words, we appreciate that. Um, under the cover, I have prepared a short summary presentation. This is gonna touch on some of the more important numbers, uh, we're doing a little. Uh, but once I'm finished, I'll be happy to go over it as much as you can. Uh, first, I just wanna briefly go over an overview of the audit process. Now, the audit can broken into three general phases, the first being planning and risk assessment phase. This is typically done prior year in, possibly during the summer, uh, we'll come out your internal control reviews and put together our preliminary one. The next stage is the bulk of what we do, this is the year in field work, so this is where we are auditing all the assets, liabilities, revenues and expenses across all funds. And the final stage is the conclusion and reporting, that's the wrap up of the findings that we get out of preparation of the report and the presentation of the report. Uh, next, just wanna briefly go over the components of your financial report, it's quite large. It can be broken into the auditor's opinion, called the management's discussion and analysis, then the basic financial statements, which include the government-wide fund level and notes. Then the required supplementary information, which includes your budget, actual schedules, pension schedules and all that, both that is given. Next is what we consider to be the most important part of your audited financial statement is the contribution. This is our independent auditor's report. Uh, this can have four possible outcomes, uh, the best being an unmodified audit opinion and the worst being adverse audit opinion. Uh, we're happy to say that we were able to issue an unmodified audit opinion on the city's financials. So this is the highest level of assurance that we can give with these financial statements, are free of any material misstatement and all footnotes are disclosed. Next, I just wanna point out several financial highlights. Uh, as of the end of the year, total citywide net position was twenty point nine million. This was an increase of about one point two million from the prior year. Your governmental funds, which includes your general fund, debt service, capital projects and any special revenue funds have a total fund balance of three point four million, this was an overall increase of about three hundred and sixty thousand from the prior year. The unassigned fund balance, uh, portion of your general fund that is available for um to be spent at your leisure or to be set as a reserve, hold just under three million, which equated to about ninety three percent of your annual general fund expenditures. So certainly a healthy amount sitting in your unassigned fund balance for your general fund. Next, your net pension liability for your CMRS pension, total of just under eighty four million, this was an increase of about twenty eight thousand prior year. Next is a summary of your citywide governmental activity revenues. Uh, total governmental revenues consolidated was three point seven millions, prior year was about three point four million. Uh, three largest being sales tax, which over fifteen percent of all of your revenues, over five hundred and seventy thousand. Making my grill similar to last year's and five hundred. Public parking taxes were thirty one percent and over one point one million. Last year was fifty one million and nine hundred and ninety five. Prices for services totaled forty one percent, one point five million and uh was an increase over last year. Next is a summary of your governmental activities revenues, uh, total, I'm sorry, expenses, total expenses for the year were three point two million. Last year's expenses totaled uh two point six million. Public safety, which equated to forty nine percent of your expenditures, pulled one point five million. And that was an increase of a last year of one point three million. Uh, general government, which totaled thirty nine percent, but one point, just under one point three million was an increase of a last year of nine hundred and seventy four thousand. And public work expenses, equated to ten percent and over three hundred and fifteen thousand, and prior year was about three hundred and twenty five thousand. Next is a summary of your changes in that position for your water and sewer fund. Uh, this fund does determine your governmental funds and that it should be self-supporting. So it should have rates that are set at a low level to do fund operations, debt service and any capital improvements. So if these funds are losing money over time, that's typically an education that there's some sort of rate issue or operation. Uh, so the number I wanna point out to you here is your operating income or loss for the year, this city did have an operating water and sewer fund of about fifty eight thousand. So as long as that's positive and in line with what your additional work a year, uh, that's a good sign. Uh, the overall change in that position was seven hundred and thirty one thousand, but I wanna, I do wanna point out six hundred and eighty two thousand, that was a non-recurring brand that occurred during the year, so that's not something that's gonna be recurring for the year. Okay, so that does conclude my summary presentation, but as I can clean up, I'm happy to go with anything that's. Thank you.
Can I understand the motion, please?
I made the motion to uh through the, through the twenty twenty eight, fabulous last and.
But motion has been made by uh Mayor Proctor, second by Councilmember Jones, all in favor, all opposed. Motion passed.
Regular agenda item B for B. Discussion, consideration of and possible action of the April twenty twenty four. Financial and other related matters, roofing table, financial direction.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. I'm pleased to present a financial report for month ending, April twenty twenty four. We represent seven months of the current fiscal year. Um, the city has bank accounts with two financial institutions, Crossbank and Techpool. Then that change in all accounts was an outflow of ninety eight thousand dollars for the mugs of people. As you can see, um, I've separated out between Crossbank and Techpool. General fund, the city projected an annual fund balance of five point four million dollars for the fiscal year twenty four, which includes all those activities we spoke about, um, audit and so forth. Uh, currently, our budgeted target for the seven months out of the twelve months should be about fifty eight point three three, which equates to three point one million. On page two of seven, our revenue, we're currently represented fifty four point three four percent, which is two million nine hundred sixty two thousand eight hundred and thirty nine dollars of our elections against our budget, which is slightly under than the projected budget I had mentioned, which is fifty eight point three three. For the seven months, I mean, we go point point four. As you can see, I have the chart and a graph. Our actual revenue was two million nine hundred sixty two thousand eight thirty nine and our approved budget was five point four, five million four hundred fifty one thousand nine hundred and thirty nine dollars. And as you can see, we're just a slight. And as you can see down below in our revenue, I have categorized them by our areas of revenue. Um, you'll see the graph there and you'll also see a line graph on page three. And I've listed the top three that represent our revenue, which is property tax coming in at twenty two point three seven percent. Our municipal court coming in at thirteen point six three percent and our sales tax revenue coming in at seven point eight eight percent. Down below, taking um a segment of our sales tax that make up our third um highest revenue for the city. Our sales tax, the back below is a historical breakdown of the general sales tax by month between fiscal year twenty three and fiscal year twenty four, and as you can see, we're equal. And it's just a little historical chart for your revenue. On page four of seven, um, I'd like to talk a little bit about turns, because that's always been the area of concern and we're gonna try to change these summaries up for a little bit more knowledge during our workshops. On our turns, uh, just so basically in in general, how it calculates is, you know, the Fort Ben assesses the tax values for Fort Ben um for our turns area. And there is a tax value, there's also a base value right before the turns uh has uh been created. And so the net is our turns value. Of course, this changes and as it changes, so will our values change. But as you can see, we divide our taxable value um against our tax rate and gives you what the turns value is. So how it's split out in our agreement is eighty five fifteen. And as you can see, we are full at M and B will get eighty five percent and the city of Arcola will get fifteen percent. And this will change as the values change and this will change here as the values go up. Going into our expenditures, yearly gain expenditures represent about fifty two point zero nine, which equates to two million eight hundred thirty nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars against our budget, which is slightly under than the projected budget of fifty eight point three three. We're trying to come up with a three million one eighty, two hundred and ninety eight dollars and we're just slightly under that for seven months, which ends at point point four. And I have done similar to where I've been um listed the numbers and I've also listed did uh a graph that kind of projects that we're under our expenses. that kind of projects that we're under our expenses. As similar as I've done with revenue, I've also done it by categories for expenditures. And below you will see the top three expenditures for the city. Administration came in at fourteen point one seven percent. Police came in at eleven point one four percent. And some capital expenditures that have taken place throughout the city of nine point zero seven percent. On page six of seven, you'll see the line, just a similar line graph instead of a bar graph of our categories. And that includes general fund. I'm going into the enterprise fund, which is our water and sewer utilities. Our revenue for enterprise, the city collected nine hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars for the water and sewer for seven-month period for the fiscal year twenty-four. We operated approved budget for fiscal year twenty-four is three point three million dollars. We're currently at twenty-nine point three five percent of our collections against the projected budget of fifty-eight point three three, and you're thinking, oh, my goodness, we're so short. We projected some additional revenue and expenditures, which did not take place this year and will be adjusted during the new year. So you'll see those changes take place during the new year. Appropriations will be active this year, sometime next year. And you'll see again the listed amount of revenue against the annual budget, and you'll see the graph support. Our expenditures for the water and sewer represent twenty-nine point three five percent, which is nine hundred and seventy-five thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars against our budget, which is under the projected budget of fifty-eight thousand point three three percent for the seven months of April. And again, allow me to mention that some projects did not take place. Additional revenues did not come in due to transfer of funds from reserve, so those will be adjusted during the new year. One thing I would like to point out is the smoke testing and the sewer lines repairs for the city of Arco do take place. They took place between the last part of last fiscal year and most of this year. And I'm proud to present that our budgeted amount for the smoke testing was five hundred thousand and came in at a hundred and two thousand dollars. So that's going a nice expenditure to have after having the cost and looking at all of the smoke testing for the entire city. And that's all I have for the financial report, and I'll take any questions that you may have, but that concludes my report. Can I understand the motion please? Motion has been made by Councilmember B, second by the president, all in favor.
Regular agenda item for A, discussion, consideration of and possible action on the twenty twenty-four program with Community Express utilizing general funds, but not to exceed the amount of forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars per sill of ground, President of Community Express.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for the honor to appear for you today. What I have to say is that words matter. Nineteen ninety-four, Sheila Jackson Lee said that too often when people need our best, we give them our worst. Or over the last thirty years, I've spent my life, a life dedicated to a life of service. That's the survival. And I want to applaud the mayor, Dr. Will Williams, for the service and commitment that she showed to the city of Arco and their youth for over the last thirty years. With no, no return from that but a self-fulfillment that we're not just investing in kids, we're investing in generations. When you change one life, you change a generation. Too often that our kids in Arco, just because of where it is, do not receive the same type of investments that others receive in other communities, just because Arco is a community that has been underserved for many years. Now, all of a sudden, there's a lot of development. That's great, but we can't leave those behind that need us so much. We're asking for an investment in our youth, an additional thirty-five thousand dollars. We've already received in advance twelve thousand five hundred dollars, which means the previous administration allocated those funds, so they must have been imported. So we're asking for an increase, because really, it's not about me, it's about our youth. And we have kids that have been with us for four years now. And they returned. Today's our first day of town, so we had a very busy day. Everyone is excited, and we're not talking about anyone. We're talking about citizens of Arco. Citizens that live in this community, that's been living in this community for generations. And their kids still come to us. We have served generations of youth. Youth that our program started nineteen ninety-four, have kids of their own. And we're just asking for an investment so that we can continue to invest and lift our community up. And I know that Dr. Williams at the helm, not only investing in our youth, but she's going to invest in the city to ensure that all citizens are valued to the same level that we have served our young for the last thirty years. So please consider increasing in investing in our youth. Thank you so much.
Like the gentleman said, the things that's a significant increase, speaking of the ones you've granted me. And you wanted to question, because I knew it's been a great time, that what the expenses going to be for the family, maintaining this investment, and I think I believe that one of the things towards the year, and like, you know, something like that, and also a good thing there, you know, you know, how many of yous were there last year compared to this year? When you break down, like, some of you were actually in Arco, and then actually outside of Arco. You know, this information, so, you know, we're accountable for even writing this thing.
Thank you. So let's have a conversation. Each year that we receive funds from the city of Arco, we are required to provide you with every receipt, everything that's mandatory. And we're more than happy to give you a breakdown, but as Dr. Williams said, the mayor said earlier, before, she's invested her time not receiving a penny, or working with the kids. You don't have that, you don't have that reason this year. You have to hire more people to do it, and you have to realize, we have four programs in one. You have five to seven, eight to ten, eleven to thirteen, and then our fourteen to eighteen, they're paying, they're interns. They're paying, we have the great opportunity this year for them to actually go and shadow different people at the city hall. Last year, we was at Mustang Park. I came before the board. Our funding was cut in half last year. We had previously received twenty-five thousand dollars. We were cut in half, and then we were not able to hold a program here last year. We had to go to Mustang, which we was on the verge of not even having a program last year. So we're happy to be back this year, which is the greatest spot for us, but we are more than happy to be there. We don't spend a penny without accounting for and providing a receipt to the city council. Thank you so much.
So can I understand the motion? Whatever the motion is, can I understand the motion? Are you just going with the same? Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, second by the president, all in favor.
Regular agenda item for F, discussion, consideration of and possible action to enter into a contact with Enterprise Commercial Paying from General Fund to replace existing failed speed box and replaced with speed box, not to exceed the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars Pindell Manor membership. Kobe Brown, Estimator for Enterprise Commercial Paying.
Hi, Harry. Yeah, so we followed those, I guess, eighty-nine months ago, the same project, you know. We have completed some teams on various guys. I was riding the road yesterday. Those were pretty rough, coming through, following our far. It seemed, but we will come in and demo what they've done and completely go back with ours. Twenty foot by twelve foot, go back with those, get that, and go to the car.
Is it one of the whole things? The whole thing? Like you're saying, use the same product that you have rebuilding with?
We will demo there as they did and completely go back with.
Well, is that some recycling?
So we were popping up with a skid steer or a backhoe, and we just haul it back to the front. Doesn't it do any feeling less, you know, fresh form? So a- as you guys can see on the right, they had to mill the top of those down. Those are the ones that they do, and the ones up on the left are the ones they're going to pick over a year ago.
Mayor and Councilman, you do have a photograph.
So the left is on Mass percent, I believe, and the right is South Valley.
Probably really charging us to remove the existing network.
Kobe that you were for, Arco.
Enterprise commercial pages from General Fund to replace existing failed speed box. Replaced with locked open box. Not to exceed the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. Find your name and give the Kobe Brown, Estimator for Enterprise Commercial Paying. So if you will, I mean the motion that we're approving.
Okay. Motion has been made by Councilmember B, second by Councilmember Jones to enter the contract with Enterprise Commercial Paying to replace the existing failed speed box, you know, I said, two ninety-five million fifty dollars, fifty dollars. All in favor? All in all, motion passed.
Regular agenda item for B. Discussion, consideration of and possible action on the update of remarks of February, March, April, and May twenty twenty-four. Turn at least four. The new software and other related matters, let me forget, turn and read the script.
And Councilmember B, I think, that I've been for a very long time. Tonight, I'll be submitting a transcript of reports. We have to attempt to go over. So I'm going to start with the coming department report for the month of February and coming forward. We wish you a few events, one family, one family, one family, five families, one family, one water, six families, almost sixteen families on the month of February. The month of March twenty twenty-four, we issued twenty-two million families, four Broadway families, fifty-four families, two families, one family, one family, one family, one family, one family, one family, and six with water, two with chips, but sold a hundred and seventy families for the month of March. The point four, the month of April, point twenty-four. We issued seventy-five daily families, twenty-five electric families, two families, twenty-three, ninety-nine families, one noise family, one family, third family, one model family, one world family, one five hundred, two thousand, one family, forty-three water, two children, and fifty-four new water, two new cars. But sold out of two million and fifty-three families for the month of April twenty twenty-four. Reporting for the month of May, the forty twenty-four, one family, thirty-one, one family, twenty-five families, one family, eighteen, one family, one family, one family, one family, two water, two children, and thirteen new water, two new cars, but sold ninety families for May twenty twenty-four. I'm very questioning the driving the current reports. But when I share with you my most opinion, I'm willing to be there. So moving on, I I'm super happy to share with you guys that the city of Arco, families and families, and students, and all the papers and hobbies and all that, and everything. And we are now running up online one hundred percent with a software called City Bill. City Bill is a software program for the Eastside to streamline your operations by providing a visual screening of several areas. And under City Bill says, we aspire to be offering in the community parties to operate and find in City Bill. City Bills allows a safety to apply until clear some one. So then the group are citing, City Bill is a very interesting software. The students now, they can go into the city store. Create a login, I mean, actually, apply for any family that the city offers. They have a delivery with pay online. So if we pass, uh, one of our systems, in terms of macro success, they can still come to the office and come in with you, run their application, do system, and they can pay with the money order. And also, obviously, we're putting that money order in fifty, and still running through the process that we're paying for. But one of the things that I really liked, you know, was excited about this thing going, um, we have a launch. The task force gives us an opportunity to look at our workflow, you know, pipeline, about fifteen years, we do see on a daily basis. The current series of processes, current that have excited within the city, current series of sessions. We also believe that. Um, and we also believe that directly to the board, with any averages that apply that family. Um, so that's all we need to say. Um, we have been live now on four of our, uh, little old boys. Live names, that's two, three, four. So, um, I was curious because, um. I worked with, um, the contractors in Tulsa, which was where, uh, my business, um, after this was um, Steve. Um, the cannibal, uh, plumbing and the other different companies. So I was curious that I reached out to all the contractors and I asked them to provide me some feedback. And how they thought this was going to work. Um, had to say that, um, everybody was pleased, but I wanted to come out, um, once we, uh, one of the contractors. Players who makes a million difference, um, in our new project. Um, basically, everything was easy to work with because of the step-by-step that I'm doing. Uh, after the firm was okay, we discussed, um, the friendly process, these tasks, many was coming in pretty often. They're very pleased with each other and were satisfied with the noises, um, and how they pitched it, you know, during the last three days. So I have the dollars to flip when I have it, but I feel I'm super excited. Um, but we have moved, up and up. Sorry guys, that we talked too, but they're not interested. Um, can I, can I know?
Something like, you know. If you, if you, some of the problems, they, they really might, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Motion was going to go about, yeah, for ten, thirty, so second by, I'm sure you've done, all in favor, sir? All in favor? Motion passed.
Regular agenda item four A. Discussion, consideration of and possible action on the cost related to the event of four health rely. But not to exceed seven thousand nine hundred sixty dollars that they were sent. From hot set, fun, police chief, far line.
Okay, okay. Um, so, and there was, when, but that would be a good idea, right? But I had to work in private, to be something, um, positive, to follow me. You, you still have to hang it on, on, in this vast, but we know, so you have reached out. And our past, um, four new islands, there were, um. The fireworks were donated by, um, vendors, and however, on fireworks, there was, that we can no longer. Have the fireworks, that way, but you have to give a vendor that can do a fireworks show, so you found a vendor that will, um, provide, send about it in fireworks show. Um, and then the other parts are, um, a sleeper to clean the fire light. Um, a, a lot of, one of the lights, being taken, and what about water? And also, um, the camera boy will also have early air bounce. And multiple, uh, additional handies coming out, that's three, and then no phone, and then. For that's over, has the, um, for this money, we come out with half that, to take this.
The water, fire war? You, that we used to buy.
Your party. Would you call the other thing?
I, I haven't been able to agree with you, but I'm, 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 the firm, uh, then, uh, kind of, you know, you're speaking for the hot set part of. In the hot set, fun. Hot set, you, you, when you start with.
Most members may, uh, therefore, here, there's a sample, second by, I'm being there. Please, uh, there, uh, my home. I mean, thank you, thank you. I'm not, no, yeah. Motion is passed.
Regular agenda item. Four I. Discussion, consideration of and possible action for the engineering to submit a construction plan and. Associated forest partners related to adding five hours for the water treatment of the city of Alcoa Water Plant. Number one, in the amount of twenty-five thousand. From the Enterprise Fund, to the Texas Commission. On environmental quality, warrant, time, community.
As you all can tell, I'm not, I'm starting to clue to me. I'm Carl McCallum, with Cluesing. Uh, several of y'all recognize me, I've been here before. I was, been really involved in water plant, sewer plant, and all the placing and all that, everything going on. Don and I, we've been, what, stony thing? And we've put forty, twenty-five years that we've worked together with each other. Uh, Clarence is the pretty face that y'all get to see, okay, that's maybe fairly, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna see him doing work. Uh, what this is, is to, uh, add polyphosphate at the water treatment plant. Uh, real simple process, but it, uh, T C E requires if you actually present instruction plans for what you're gonna do. And also do a formal test case meeting for inception for their standard water treatment group. So that's what puts it my life.
In fact. Thank you. I can only thank the volunteers, please. I'm gonna need to use two, two, thirty, five, 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 thirty, 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 forty, forty, twenty, twenty-five. Also, I can only thank the councilmen down, second by councilmen, uh, our, 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 our colleagues. Motion passed.
Thanks, over.
Regular agenda item four N. Discussion, consideration of impossible action to sell seven hundred and fifty dollars donated by the back to school. Back to program with Wispomian, John Company, Police Chief, Paul Brown.
So we are having a back to school, uh, that again we give. Um, we partner with New St. Louis, person, some other, um, people in the area. So last year, they gave the back to drive, the deep bathroom we did on, so we partnered together, so. The one you see, the one back, not just here, and our goal is to bring a thousand back there. So this year, we pay some, we make seven hundred and fifty dollars, or even have, we have the stuff, we, 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 we. Can I say more to my next?
I'm also doing best, giving you two thousand and fifty for the back to, um, program, with this one more, really tough.
Motion has been made by, yeah, for the, uh, thirty, so second by, I'm being big, all in favor, sir? All in favor? Motion passed.
Regular agenda item. Four K. Discussion, consideration of and possible action on the update of the month of May twenty twenty-four. Operators report and other related matters. John Montgomery, municipal house, operators and consulting.
Senior American Councilman, citizen, looking at the city. You know, the two thousand, twenty-four, I guess, some string of things there. They left it inside, it's all water connection, eight forty-two. It was left, it was left in storage next to, same in seventy-nine. I'm down next to. All right, we're going through. We're going through this, uh, four minutes. Uh, back on, I guess. We were about, like the way for, to move back up, to, you, you. There we go, knowing period, four nine two, thirty-five, ten, ten with seventy-nine, seventy-five, five thousand, eighty plus. So the right there, April, we need to count, so, uh, foreign shirt, counting ninety-five, we need with. Sure, count, and it's fifty-six, uh, zero, five this month, and we left there, revenue, three, pretty much, maybe, one nineteen, oh, seventy-five, five, and so, I think. Uh, I'm waiting for a second, next. So they create that a firm is locked, thousand twenty-nine, even numbers, say the two thousand twenty-four. Add to the plan, fifty-four, fifty-seven, sixty-nine, thirty-five thousand, so I do it. Thirty-nine, some capacity, and then, probably, two, three, four, five, permanent. Rainfall goes on, one, two, one, six, three, three. Red one, one, four, seven, seventeen. The equation, red one, one, two, and the plan is close back to sixty-three percent, or over twenty-five percent. Then instead of thirty-nine, ten, close back, the plan has a base. All right, that's your operation log there. Some clients, and rain time, and low data, and the high net, like sixty-three, the middle, and believe, uh, there, to say, thank you. Some clients, all euros, and thirty-seven. As the mayor said, a few things to talk about, uh, we discussed in our meeting last week with. When there. Infiltration issues, we talked about those in the past, we have something to know, our key factors round, three and F four. Science and dead rail, rainfall data, fourth of land, so now that you do that, with infiltration issues. Maybe identify some possible funds there, and work on that, and our next step, we smoke test the system. Uh, found some repairs, major repairs, and then give you the next phase, if it. I draw any, and so, it's a lot of people on, in my next step. Might be some possible funds out there, and some to break them out, and, and then we press forward that. Uh, we flip off the episode program, and learn to follow, working on that program, for a little while now. Uh, maybe, maybe something to talk about, and talk about future, like on the mirrors a little bit, and we come back on that. Say a good news, Mary. Go, break it. Any questions, you know, Larry, and? All right, great.
All right, I'm saying, I'm working, please. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just. I'm just. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just. You can only thank me by, thank you, and second by, thank you, and, hey, boy, all in favor?
All right.
All in favor? And then all files, please? I'm talking down. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just. I've been the world father. I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Where, uh, 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 you do that. Uh.
All right.
Uh. Motion passed.
Requested regular agenda item five K. Discussion, consideration of impossible action. Paying of legal fees for time and seasons, not for representing councilmembers, Sainco, DZ, and Jones. Mayor Folton, Sainco, and councilmembers Jones.
I'm gonna make a motion to pay the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Now, um. But. Motion has been made by, by, you know, you said, you have to, then you have to, second by, I'm being done, all in favor?
Sir.
All in favor? Can I get a little file, please? So.
I just, I always get changed.
Potable, potential, yeah.
All right. Um. And.
All right. Motion passed.
Requested regular agenda item five B. Discussion, consideration of impossible action. A financial audit covering the last year. Mayor Folton, Sainco, and councilmembers Jones.
Think of these guys, to be, to be, to be, to be, to be. First one, the mayor, the councilman, the town, second by councilman, the bar, all the tables, you know, all in favor?
All right.
All in favor? Motion passed.
Contracts and agreement, six A. Discussion, consideration of and possible action on the annual. Cost for installation of polyphosphate to the city of Alcoa Water Plant One. The amount of six thousand dollars annually from the Enterprise Fund. John Montgomery, municipal cell, operation and consulting.
Yeah, yeah, we just spent off what we talked about earlier, so install, T C P, taking environment quality. Till we get some food back, and we let her back there, and say, we're pretty defeated, probably, I'm thinking this year, what I thought I called two fourteen. Uh, polyphosphate, yes, a question, agent, once we get that food back. And T C P, and we start feeding that polyphosphate. We don't talk, if we go based on, though, right now, six thousand, so. Problem skill, and. Pretty, when we, Carl had approval, it reached, so we'd be down the road, pick, but the year, but we'd expect it funny. And there'll be some additional samples, once people are back to say, they'll say, the next. Few months after, even, probably, one additional sample, department, we could, but it's probably the top.
We want. Can I say more?
Thank you, Martin, we, we, uh, pass, um, condition, I'm, 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 thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Motion has been made by, by, second by, councilman, the Jones, all in favor?
All right.
All in favor? Can you roll, father?
All right. All right.
All right.
All right.
And you, when you have. Contracts and agreements, six B. Discussion, consideration of and possible action on the approval of the contract in the amount of. One thousand five hundred dollars a month with. J M S, human services. From general funds for cleaning service at the Alcoa City Hall Building. Doctor Amedso Bird, City Administrator.
Mayor, Council, uh, everyone, we know that we have a challenge to find contractors of plenty of blood. Now, I want to thank you, and staff, because, so, he's also, he, 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 he wants to. We actually asked, please, and there was one thing that I was, not to permit it. I second things that he's committed, and he's quite retired. And so, we are like, when you, uh, get out, the surprises. The mayor and the heart, and so, he has been able to allow him to turn. He becomes, sometimes, he's an excellent guy, so we are very pleased, and we are hoping he'll like it, like. We'll come for you.
Yeah. My stick, you see?
We, how, how long's that coming to me?
I'm making a motion to approve. I'm making a motion to approve the contract with Baymax, or E-Zero, fifty-three hundred dollars, between the years.
But. Motion has been made by, by, second by, councilman, the Jones, all in favor?
All right.
All in favor? Motion passed.
Contracts and agreement, six C. Discussion, consideration of and possible action to open a tax new account in the amount of. Thirteen thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars for the police department's fees. Money related to criminal act, Police Chief Carver.
And so, the police department has, she's back in town, so he's, um, control, thirty dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, criminal stocks. We cannot, um, with the money, we have, we have, we have, we have to spend the money. However, we cannot, um, figure that, you have to go through the court process, if they can be able to, to pray, if you can put that way. Or we have to give it back, so then.